This meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. At this time, I ask that everyone in attendance please silence their electronic devices and phones. I ask my colleagues to please acknowledge their presence on the voting board. At this time, I'm asking everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand, one nation, and a God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with our awards and recognitions. Mrs. Riggs.
Ready?
Ready.
Virginia Index of Performance Awards. Virginia Beach City Public Schools and its schools once again were named Virginia Index of Performance Awards recipients. This distinction is awarded by the Governor and State Board of Education to schools and divisions that exceed state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellent goals. Last year, VBCPS received twice as many VIP awards compared to previous years, and we are proud to report that this year we are sustaining those high levels with 22 of our schools as well as the school division once again receiving this distinction. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Ms. McLeod, to introduce our first honorees.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs, and welcome to School Principals. In some cases, schools had activities tonight, so they sent their representatives on their behalf, as was the case with our first honoree, Great Neck Middle School, accepting for them is School Improvement Specialist Kathy Morrison. Great Neck was one of only 14 schools in Virginia to receive the 2018 Governor's Award for Educational Excellence, which is the highest category of VIP awards. To earn this award, schools must meet all state and federal achievement benchmarks and all applicable excellent goals, including enrollment in Algebra I by eighth grade. Congratulations, Great Neck Middle School. Sorry for the chuckle about Algebra I. You have to watch the video of the workshop to understand that. Okay. Next, our 2018 Board of Education Excellent Award recipients, John B. Dye Elementary School, Kingston Elementary School, North Landing Elementary School, Old Donation School, Red Mill Elementary School, Strawbridge Elementary School, and Thoroughgood Elementary This award category recognizes schools that met all state and federal accountability benchmarks and made significant progress towards goal for increased student achievement and expanded educational opportunities. Congratulations, schools. Mrs. Holtz will introduce our next recipients.
Our next honorees of the 2018 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award winners, please welcome Creed's Elementary School, Cock-Tie School, Glenwood Elementary School, Green Run Collegiate, accepting is IB Coordinator Nicholas Calderon, Heritage Elementary School, Hempsville Elementary School Assistant Principal Ali Cook will accept, Landstown Elementary School, Ocean Lakes High School, Pembroke Elementary School, Princess Anne Elementary School Assistant Principal Ginny O'Malley, accepting, Princess Anne High School, Princess Anne Middle School, Salem High School, Tranwood Elementary School, and Virginia Beach City Public School, which earned the Division-wide Award. Accepting for the school division is Interim Chief Academic Officer of Teaching and Learning, Leslie Hughes. To earn this award, honorees must have met all state and federal benchmarks and made progress toward the goals of the Governor and Board of Education. Congratulations to them and to all of these evening's honorees. Mrs. Chairwoman, this is our only recognition this evening.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Had the luck. Congratulations.
Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Chairwoman Anderson and members of the board. Well, last week, more than 400 teachers new to the division took to the halls of Towahood High School to participate in our four-day Tocley event, where they get to learn everything about what it means to be a teacher of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. If you've ever had the opportunity to attend Tocley, you'll see that even with hundreds of attendees, some of whom have never taught a day before and some of whom are seasoned veterans, it is a well-oiled machine with dozens of sessions and days of learning going on seamlessly together. This machine is powered by tremendous creativity, ingenuity, and vision from the team in our Office of Professional Growth and Innovation. So tonight, our compass keeper is Dr. Janine Gorham from PGI, who helps to create dynamic learning opportunities like these throughout the year. Let's take a look at this video.
Tocley stands for Teacher Orientation Continuous Learning Institute. It's a big part of establishing a relationship with new teachers and getting past the idea that you're just filling a position but that the system really cares about you as a person. They've spent all morning at their school, meeting their school family, and they drive over here, and they come in, and the students are always greeting and cheering, and they just have this look of, you know, excitement and hope and optimism on their face, and it's amazing.
The first time I met Janine, I was a principal at Salem High School. We were sitting in a meeting, and she was in the Department of Technology at the time. I could tell right away within that meeting that she had a deep passion for learning, was a critical thinker, a very deep thinker, and was someone who was never going to be confined to thinking inside the box.
I've always worked with teachers. I've always cared about them. But in the past few years, we've been reaching out and working with office associates, custodians, cafeteria, and some of those employee groups that really haven't had a lot of opportunities are now finding that they have lots of choices and that we value their contributions and their learning and their growth and their opportunities for promotion as much as we do any employee. Every employee has an opportunity to get better at their job and to dream of new positions and opportunities.
So Gofor of Compass 2020 outlines how we will be defined by a culture of growth and excellence for our students, staff, and our community. Janine's work and her leadership in her office are helping us meet this goal day in and day out for our staff, our teachers, and our administrators. Janine is with us here this evening. If we could ask her to stand up so that we can recognize her for her leadership. Just as a reminder, I am proud to note that as a part of our reorganization, Janine is now serving as Director of the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation, which is now part of the Department of School Leadership. And I know that in that capacity, she will continue building the incredible capacity here for all of our VBCPS team. As always, this compass keeper feature will be added on our blog, The Core, along with all of our former compass keepers. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
No, ma'am.
And I failed to note this earlier, but Mrs. Manning is absent this evening due to a family obligation. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the August 14 meeting. Motion is made by Mrs. Holtz, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Voting board is open. And Mr. McDonald, you are abstaining because you were absent at the last meeting, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening. The motion is made by Ms. McLeod, seconded by Ms. Riggs. I'm sorry, Ms...seconded by Mrs. Rye. I knew it started with an "R." The voting board is open. On the consent agenda this evening, item A on the consent agenda has to do with religious exemptions, which we were sent through in our packet. Item B has three policy review committee recommendations. Policy 4-65, meetings and conferences. Policy 5-17, absences, truancy, parental identification. And Regulation 5-17.1, absences, truancy, and policy also 521, student suspensions and expulsions, along with Regulation 5-21.1, student suspension and expulsion. Item C is the updated Legal Services Cooperative Agreement for fiscal year 19. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Riggs has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Melnick. The voting board is open. Under action this evening for the first action item, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the personnel and administrative appointments. The motion is made by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Ms. Holtz. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The personnel and administrative appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce our new administrators?
I would. Thank you, Madam Chairman. If I could ask Natalie Dever King to please stand up. Dever has served with distinction as a teacher in Hopewell, Prince George, Isle of Wight, and CSEP, and most recently has been working as a behavior specialist in Hampton City Schools. And this evening, I'm pleased that you have approved our recommendation for her to serve as Coordinator of Special Education in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations, Dever. I believe you have some guests with you?
Yes. Chris and my son Cameron.
Thank you all for being here.
Welcome.
Although you didn't approve this this evening, you approved this at the last board meeting, I did want to take the opportunity, because she was in town looking at houses, to introduce to the board Natalie Allen, who will be serving as our new Chief Communications Officer. Natalie has served as a communications specialist in Henrico County, Baltimore County, and most recently as Chief Communications Officer in Kansas City and Chief of Staff in Kansas City. Natalie, thank you for being here, and congratulations. And I believe you also have some guests with you.
Thank you. I have my husband Rick, my dad Donald, and my stepmom Linda.
Thank you all for being here. Madam Chairwoman, that is all of the recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. The Chair will now accept a motion for the recommendation of the general contractor for Thoroughgood Elementary School. Motion is made by Mrs. McLeod, seconded by Mrs. Riggs. Is there any discussion? Mr. Arnold is here to answer anything you may ask. Seeing none, the voting board is open. Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you.
The motion has passed. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve Policy 4-39, Employee...sorry. We have one abstention? I'm sorry.
I abstain from all...any construction business at all. I'm a subcontractor.
Thank you. Now, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve Policy 4-39, Employee Professional Development and Growth in Job Skills. The motion is made by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mrs. Riggs. Is there any discussion? Mrs. McLeod?
Yeah, I want to thank the Policy Committee for taking some of this back. I see that it's...the concern we had last round with this was regarding professional development activities may occur outside the year-round, maybe required outside of contract dates, and I think you've done a pretty good job. I know we've left it vague but yet accountable by saying that attendance at professional development may be excused as determined by supervising administrator. Professional development activities shall be reasonable in number and duration with sufficient notice provided. And I know there was no way we were going to come up with what is sufficient, but I appreciate that you guys took the time to review this just a little bit longer. And so it's really more of a comment of saying thank you, but...
A clarification at the Policy Review Committee, Dr. Spence brought this up when we were reviewing it, was that there is no longer a mandatory professional development training, which was one of the concerns people had, you're not required to be at any specific training. So this would minimize the chances of you being forced to come to something you had a conflict with.
Right. It's great. You guys did a good job.
Mrs. Melnick, did you have something?
No, that was my comment, that there are no mandatory PLCs.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. Yeah, the language that the Policy Committee have come up with seems to align. I remember a conversation about meetings, building meetings that principals would call, and us having a conversation about sufficient notice for those meetings to try to avoid conflicts and what happens if a teacher or employee isn't able to meet those meetings. So I think this aligns with the outcome of that discussion. And again, I will say that if we run into issues with what sufficient notice means, we'll handle it then, and that was the outcome of the previous conversation. And I would just encourage people that believe that they aren't given sufficient notice to let us know when we will revisit.
Thank you. Mrs. Rye?
And I'll just add that the policy Mr. McDonald's referring to was approved tonight. It's up above on the agenda, 465 Meetings and Conferences. So yes, very similar language.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, seeing no other comments, the voting board is open. The motion has passed. The first information item this evening is the Long Range Facilities Plan. Mr. Arnold, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Spence. I've got with me Tracy Richter with Cooperative Strategies. We've also got Matt Sacks, who works with Tracy, and Mike Ross with HBA Architects. They've been working with us for the past year on our Long Range Facilities Plan. Before we get started, I want to acknowledge a few folks who've been working with us here for the better part of the past year. We've had a steering committee. We've met about a half a dozen times, and you've been represented really well by Ms. McLeod, who actually was one of the co-chairs of the committee 11 years ago. Mrs. Riggs was also on the committee. They attended all the steering committee meetings, were very helpful. We had city council members, Ms. Wilson was at a lot of the meetings, Chamber of Commerce, TCC. Students showed up at the vast majority of the steering committee meetings. So you were well represented, the city, and all of our stakeholders were well represented throughout this entire journey. Really to summarize, we did this about 11 years ago. The Board formally accepted our Long Range Facilities Plan in 2007. A somewhat similar effort, very similar team members. We had public meetings like we did today. Really, the biggest difference for us this time was technology and surveys. We had, 11 years ago, we had a lot more people come out to the public meetings. This time, with the use of surveys, not as many people came out to the public meetings. We got a lot of really good feedback through our two surveys. Tracy will go over some of the results of the surveys in just a second. But really, a good inclusive process that involved all of our stakeholders and we think sets the course for us for the next 15 or 20 years as it relates to our long-range plans. I know this is difficult to read, but this speaks to the schools that were laid out 11 years ago, and the green represents when it was supposed to be built based on the plan 11 years ago, and the black bars represent when it was actually built. The good news, we had an early discussion with y'all a couple of weeks ago about when Great Neck Middle School came in under budget, it allowed us to actually build Kellum High School a couple of years earlier. The vast majority of the other projects have been deferred, and so you see that represented, and that's just a result of the economy. Everybody's felt that. We have been fortunate to still move forward with building quite a few projects over the past eight or 10 years, but obviously not as aggressively as we would have liked. And again, a summary, you've seen this before. It represents the Modernization Replacement Program that was started about two decades ago, and you'll see with Kellum and Old Donation and now Dye, that's about a third of the way through. Thoroughgood, you just approved tonight, thank you. Princess Anne Middle School, you approved two weeks ago. We started out there. Those represent buildings 32, 33, and 34 with an investment of about three-quarters of a billion dollars. So pretty amazing when you consider that the past decade or so, everyone has been struggling with funding for public projects. So you have a lot to be proud of. We've done a lot. This speaks to that we've got a lot left to do. When you own nearly 90 assets and 11 million square feet of space, there's always something to do. So we're proud of the plan. Tracy's going to walk you through what we've accomplished over the course of the past year, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Tony, Madam Chair, Dr. Spence, members of the board, thanks for inviting me here tonight to talk about this great effort that continues to be a great effort of planning for Virginia Beach City Schools, because a lot of people treat planning as an event. You do it as your commonplace. You plan all the time, and it makes processes like this more fluent and people to understand the data a lot better, which is a result of being able to see the surveys we saw and the real thoughtfulness that people were able to give us. You know, this process, you've seen this tool for a very long time, but it doesn't waver. We use a lot of information to put together a facilities plan. It's not just about the condition of a building, but it's about demographics, it's about the education that goes on in the schools. It's about a changing dynamic in a city that will continuously change. And so trying to keep up with that and trying to align your facilities to that when people are more mobile than buildings is a difficult thing to do, especially in the asset portfolio that you have. So all of this is considered when we're doing planning. You know, the enrollment is probably one of the key indicators here, is you need to make sure that we have enough capacity in your buildings to ensure that you have quality seats in the division. That's as simple as you can make it. A decline in enrollment over the past 10 years, but you're not alone. School districts and divisions across the country are declining in public school enrollment, a lot due to the birth rates, the post-depression kind of recession birth rates have declined across the country. And you know, the districts that are really growing are those Midwest suburbs that continue to seem to never stop because there's so much farmland out there. But other than that, that's just everybody is in that role. And so what we do see, though, is a real stabilization, especially at the K-5 grade level, over the next five years. You know, projecting out much longer than that is pretty pointless, as we all know that, you know, that five-year projection's pretty solid and has been. The division does a great job of doing projections of enrollment. We validate the enrollment. We don't actually do the projection because this division does such a good job of analyzing and keeping track of this. I think that one of the big things to note here is that in that stabilization, you know, we did a lot of heavy lifting in the first round of facility plan when it was that 2006/07. Establishing the real framework for your facilities that has been tested against and has been proven to work, that has been maintained for, you know, the size of buildings you want, the grade configurations you want, the types of program and spaces you want in those buildings. That was really hard work back in 2006 and '07. It wasn't this time because it's a proven...you guys have proven as a school board and a division to make it work really well. So it wasn't something we had to deal with. So even in the stabilization of enrollment that you see in the slight decline, we didn't have to talk about boundaries, and we didn't have to talk about school consolidation like we did, which are very difficult topics to talk about. We didn't deal with that because we didn't have to this time. Buildings and the capacity that you have will maintain growth in programs that you have, be able to maintain class sizes that you have, as long as the budget holds for class size, but the facilities are going to be able to maintain that. And so that's really good news as you look forward in the next 15-year capital program. You know, the facility condition is obviously something that we look at. Mike Ross does a great job of maintaining this data year in and year out for you, and it was easy to recollect the data, get it all back together. But the one thing that we want to make sure that people know is that we just don't look at boilers and windows and roofs. We actually look at the educational component in your buildings, making sure that if spaces need renovated into today's standard, that those spaces oftentimes are just as important as having a quality roof on your building or, you know, quality HVAC unit in your building. And so we look at what we call the educational adequacy factor. And when you combine the two, you get a total condition, and really gives you a whole look at the building instead of just the condition of buildings. Many divisions will look at just the condition and base their capital programs on there and find themselves 20 or 30% short in their budgets because people want to renovate space and get it to technology standards, space standards of curriculum that really fits your model. So we use a total condition index, which really drove the indicator of the schools to be in the program. As you...there it is. The other piece that we think is really important in here is that we worked with the teaching and learning team, but really took from the Compass 2020 and looked at the facilities when we looked at the educational adequacy and making sure that when those buildings get planned for replacement or any sort of significant renovation project or modernization project, that all of these are incorporated. And so this is an important piece and which we believe is a cornerstone of facility planning. All that other data's great, but this is a cornerstone, and this is maybe the most important piece that we look at when we're looking at your facilities. We went out and met with the community several times. The first community meeting, we were really talking about kind of that big-picture things. Things we addressed were, you know, the current perception of the program, of the modernization program. And, you know, frankly, in about 4,000 surveys, people were pretty satisfied in the program. They saw a lot of construction in the last 20 years. They've seen, you know, quality maintenance of buildings, and so people feel like their buildings are being well taken care of. We'll see that when we put numbers to that and we put timelines to that, that will evolve and change in this process as we got in the second meeting. But the other thing we asked them to do is to really prioritize the data points that we should look at. You know, when we develop options and scenarios around this and those 15 buildings, it really came to the top that condition and total condition was the priority. Age had a big piece to that. Cost, little disruption. I think that sometimes, you know, you go through a major capital program, people are used to a little disruption in their programs. But we've handled that pretty well in this first phase of construction out there. And then we asked them to really look at the priority of grade level, and it emerged at the high schools. No surprise, they were a big topic in 2006 and '07, and, you know, frankly, we don't do a lot of high school projects around the country because they're so expensive. But eventually, that catches up to you. And when you've got a package and a portfolio of high schools that were built in the same era, eventually, that's going to come back to you. And that's what's happened, is that you've got, you know, four or five high schools that all emerged from that same era. And so they emerge as the top, some of the top candidates for replacement, and the community recognizes that. So we developed the options out of that, and we apply cost dollars, tax impacts, even sequence for swing space, all of those things that are necessary to do in planning. And so a lot of those get developed. But at the end of the day, what it came down to was the ability to fund. It wasn't a matter of, you know, you can get to buildings 13 to 17 and have some debate as to what those buildings could be, but, you know, the top 10 and 12, the top dozen are very clear about replacement. And so when you look at all the indicators, so it really did come down to building something about the options around funding. So we went to the second community. We started to ask people, when you start to apply the dollars that you have applied to it versus what we could apply to it, you saw that the satisfaction of the modernization program decreased significantly then, that when they saw what it takes to do a capital program moving forward, perception changes quite a bit, which is an interesting thing of what data can do. It's not manipulated to say anything... It's not manipulated to say anything other than this is what it costs to build buildings, and this is how long it'll take. And at this price, at this price, at this prices is what it's going to take to get you there. And so our recommendations were really built around that. First of all, it's about making sure that the whole division is represented, and you can see on this map that the whole division in these recommendations is represented. The most important piece to this, this funding, because I'll, I'll take you through those funding scenarios, but the, probably the most important piece is maintaining that $20 million of capital investment that you make every summer. Maintaining buildings that aren't going to be replaced is very important to this program. And it's often, again, something that many divisions kind of put by the wayside. They put many into their growth, into replacement buildings, into new shiny things. When this division looks at that as important, everything behind the walls, maintain those buildings that are going to maintain. That's the most important part of this, is that every recommendation is going to consider maintaining that funding stream for that. The recommendations and funding scenarios simply go across, and this chart is, it's not easy to read other than understanding that the average age based on, or the average time of replacement is, goes out further, you know, the less you fund it, at 40, 60, 80, or 100 million dollars. And so, you know, at the, at the $40 million, you know, basically you're looking at, you know, 2066, I mean, for a, for a completion of 15 projects. That's one every three years. Yeah, that's hard to maintain a good capital program at that, and we all understand that. But we all understand that, we all understand that we're just building the ask, is what we're trying to do, is to show people that this is what it takes to get to the capital program you want. We put it in a real simple graphic, and we feel like this graphic really showed people what you can get. At 40 million, that's two high schools in the next 15 years. That's what you can do. If you jump out to that 100 million, which is kind of a way out there dream, and we understand that, but we wanted to show that you could complete the program in 15 years for the 15 buildings if you were at 100 million a year. And then there's the variations in between. This actually then shows another scenario just on a timeline, and frankly, at 40 million, you know, Matt is as good at Excel and projecting out costs and doing all that as anybody, but he can't even get you there by 2095. And so, because the dollars with inflation just doesn't keep up. And so at 40 million, you can't get the 15 projects done within the next 70 years, is what it shows, based on the current funding streams out there. So with that, I tried to keep that as brief as possible, but just to refresh your own memories, so any questions you might have?
Sure, we have some. So, we're on a trajectory right now for 40 million a year?
Well, we've, as you look into the out-of-years of the program, we're, we're back down in the, in the mid-40s. We've been, this year, we're up in the lower 50s. But as you look into years three, four, five, and six of the capital program, we're, we're back down below 50. So, you know, the, the picture that Tracy paints long-term is pretty accurate.
Can you go back to that one that shows it?
Yes, absolutely.
That's a better.
You want that one?
That one.
Yep.
So, anybody else? Ms. Riggs? Ms. Rye? Am I doing that? I've done it twice tonight. I'm sorry, Ms. Rye.
We'll, we'll switch places tonight, okay. I thought it was important to note for the public, the discussion at the July retreat, and that as far as the list itself, that that was affirmed by the school board at the July retreat.
All right. Ms. McLeod?
I just, mine's not a question. I've participated in this long enough. I feel like I, I know it pretty well, but I wanted to remind the people watching, people up here on there, and you've heard me say it, but long story short is, this is exactly what I stood behind the podium and brought up 12 years ago. And so in the meantime, we got, we did get Callum, we did get Old donation, and we have Thurgood underway. But that was 12 years ago that we talked about what we needed to get done. And so that's, that's, and there's been a lot of other good upkeep that we've done. Great Neck Middle got done during that time, but it wasn't, and, but it's, it's frustrating. And so this is our job and our responsibility to go and encourage and come up with ways to go and find the revenue to do this, and working with our colleagues on the city council and encouraging them for them to understand, because we know, we did the impact study, but we just know this, that the schools are part of why people move to Virginia Beach, any city. Doesn't matter what city you live in, schools are a factor of why they choose to or choose not to live there, and the conditions of the building impact the learning environment. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLeod. That's very much to the point of, it looks like all of us, as all my colleagues, have a job to do. We need to inform the public, and this is one way tonight. That's why I wanted you to put that back up there, so hopefully the public is seeing We have a problem if we're not funding it adequately. I can't see us trying to get to, what was it, 2066? And really, it doesn't even take us out there. So, that's pretty far off. Ms. Rye?
Got it right that time.
Could you verbally list the schools for the benefit of the public who can't see the screen?
And it's so small here, I might not be able to see it, but yes, I will. So, we have Princess Anne High School, Betty Williams, and then Aragona, obviously with that building. Princess Anne Elementary School, Bayside High School, First Colonial High School, Kempsville High School, Holland Elementary, Kempsville Middle School, Bayside Middle School, Independence Middle School, Lynn Haven Middle School, North Landing Elementary, Green Run Elementary, Fairfield Elementary, and White Oaks Elementary School.
Thank you.
Lot of middle schools also, that's, it's a lot of square footage.
And the high schools that you mentioned were built in the 60s, is that correct?
Princess Anne, you know, I was, I went over and talked to the faculty at Princess Anne, it's built in 53. And so if you, you look at just simply the high schools, Princess Anne, First Colonial, Kempsville, and Bayside, in a couple of years, the average age of those buildings is about 60 years old. And to Tracy's point during the summer, we do have a really good job of maintaining our assets around here. You sometimes become, Dr. Spence and I were talking about, you become a victim of your own success. But those, the, the core and the structure of those buildings, they're 60 years old, and they're very inflexible facilities, you know. And so, you know, so this problem will, is going to be here for, for a long time. It's a big challenge for all of us.
So, if there's anybody, anybody out there in the public who knows a way for us to raise more funds quickly, please send us your comments. Thank you. Mrs. Rye?
Still another comment that, it's well-known fact, even with homeowners, that the, and as you said, there's so many variables, and often we, we see older schools and other districts that continue, you know, and, and the, the point being that sometimes the oldest of the schools are the best constructed, or in Tony's words, the better bones. And that was an era of construction in the 60s and 70s, and homeowners see the difference too, if you have, if, you know, owning a home built in 1940 versus 1965. I think we've learned from our mistakes as a society, but we're at this crossroads now.
Okay, seeing no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next on information is the Student Response Team SRT Evaluation Readiness Report.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Dr. Allison Bach, a program evaluation specialist in the Office of Research and Evaluation. And tonight, I'll present the Student Response Team Evaluation Readiness Report, including background information, goals and objectives, and the recommended evaluation plan. Based on School Board Policy 6-26, the purpose of the evaluation readiness process is to prepare existing programs for evaluation after they are selected for the annual program evaluation schedule. The process leads to a recommendation regarding the evaluation plan. The school board approved last year's program evaluation schedule in which the Student Response Team initiative was recommended for an evaluation readiness report in order to develop measurable goals and objectives. Over the past several months, program evaluation staff collaborated with the program manager and the Evaluation Readiness Committee to develop goals and objectives focused on implementation and student outcomes. In addition, a proposed evaluation plan was developed for upcoming school years. As a brief background, the purpose of the Student Response Team initiative is to assist students in being successful in the general education classroom through developing and monitoring interventions for students in need. The initiative was launched during the 2016-2017 school year and developed from the Student Support Team initiative. It is aligned with Goal One, High Academic Expectations, and Goal Three, Social Emotional Development from Compass to 2020. The SRT initiative is built on staff collaboration, using data to make decisions, and providing multi-tiered systems of support. SRTs provide support predominantly within three main areas: academics, attendance, and behavior. Throughout the 2017-2018 school year, a total of 1,898 students were referred to SRT, which was 3% of the total student population. Most referrals at the elementary and middle school levels were for academics, whereas most referrals at the high school level were for attendance. The evaluation readiness process included a review of the division's SRT school guide and external research and evaluation of response to intervention programs. Program evaluators met with the program manager in the Evaluation Readiness Committee, which was comprised of assistant principals, school social workers, and school psychologists to develop measurable goals and objectives in the evaluation plan. Four implementation goals were established. The first implementation goal is that student response teams will collaborate to meet students' needs. Specific objectives related to this goal are shown on the slide. Examples include selecting SRT members based on student need, student and parent involvement, and using input from all SRT members to develop interventions. The second implementation goal is that data will be monitored and reviewed throughout the SRT process. Specific objectives related to this goal are shown on the slide. Examples include monitoring individualized goals and outcomes through data, using referral information and data to make decisions about interventions, and consistently using a method for referring students and monitoring progress within each school. The third implementation goal is that specific strategies and interventions related to the area of concern will be implemented as part of the SRT process. Specific objectives related to this goal are shown on the slide. Examples include implementing strategies prior to referral and developing individualized, research-based intervention plans for students referred to the SRT. The fourth implementation goal is that professional learning opportunities will provide administrators and teachers with effective support and information to successfully implement the SRT initiative. Specific objectives related to this goal include ensuring that staff understand the purpose of SRT, the referral process, and how to select, implement, and monitor interventions. The student outcome goal is that students served through the SRT process will demonstrate improvement within the area of concern. For example, students referred for academics will show improvement in academic performance. A final objective was that all referred students will learn strategies to be successful in the classroom. After completing the evaluation readiness process, examining the breadth of services and the current stage of implementation across the division, a two-year evaluation is recommended. Year one of the evaluation plan during 2018-2019 will focus on the implementation of SRT. Year two of the evaluation plan will focus on the student outcomes of those served by SRT. Following each year evaluation, the results from the report will be presented to the school board, generally in the fall. The evaluation each year will address operational components, student characteristics, progress toward goals and objectives, perceptions of building administrators, teachers, SRT members, students and parents, and cost. This concludes the presentation regarding the evaluation readiness process and the plans for evaluating the SRT initiative. At this time, Dr. Alita Green, Executive Director, and Mrs. Adrian Day, Director of Student Support Services, and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Sounding like we don't know what we're talking about. We, we've always had student response teams, right? For a very long time. So, in 2016, Adrian Day, Director in Student Services, in 2016-17, we transitioned from the student support team model to the student response team model, which is a more proactive model that we've switched to. Okay. Thank you. Because I know I had referred students before. And I was shocked to hear that on the high school level, it's for attendance. So, interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you very much. Item C under information is the Lead Aspiring Administrators Program Evaluation Readiness Report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Stephen Court, a program evaluation specialist in the Office of Research and Evaluation. Tonight, I'll present the Lead Aspiring Administrators Evaluation Readiness Report, including background information, goals and objectives, and the recommended evaluation plan. The purpose of the evaluation readiness process is to prepare existing programs for evaluation after they are selected for the annual program evaluation schedule. The process leads to a recommendation regarding the evaluation plan. The school board approved last year's program evaluation schedule in which the Lead Aspiring Administrators Program was recommended for an evaluation readiness report in order to develop measurable goals and objectives. Over the past several months, program evaluation staff collaborated with the Aspiring Administrators Evaluation Readiness Committee to, to develop goals and objectives along with an evaluation plan. As a brief background, the Lead Aspiring Administrators Program operates on a two-year cycle to prepare a cohort of 20 to 25 talented teachers and other instructional personnel to serve as administrators. The program aligns with Goal Four of Compass to 2020, culture of growth and excellence. The participants must be current Virginia Beach employees with at least three years of successful instructional experience. They must already have demonstrated leadership potential, and they must be recommended or approved by a supervisor, principal, or central office administrator. The program consists of multiple components, including instructional sessions facilitated by various departments during the school year, a one-day summer institute, an action research project, and a portfolio. Session content focused on topics such as school climate and culture, continuous improvement strategies, organizational leadership and management, and various aspects of Virginia Beach operations. At the end of the two-year program, each participant presents the results of his or her action research project and submits a portfolio to a panel consisting of experts from the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation and the Department of School Leadership. Successful completion of the Aspiring Administrators Program does not guarantee a promotion. Rather, successful participants join the pool of all candidates from which the division fills assistant principal and other administrative vacancies. The evaluation readiness process included a review of national, state, and division documentation associated with the school leadership programs, including a review of external research studies and evaluation reports of similar programs elsewhere. Program evaluators met with the program manager and the Evaluation Readiness Committee to refine the program goals and define measurable objectives and the evaluation plan. The first goal is that the program would add qualified candidates to the pool from which Virginia Beach selects assistant principals. Specific objectives for this goal call for the program to attract qualified candidates to prepare those participants for administrative leadership and to be perceived as successful in preparing future administrators. The second goal is that the participants who complete the program will manifest dispositions that exemplify transformational leadership. Staff who complete the program will, will build leadership capacity in others, actively promote a shared vision for improving teaching and learning, promote continuous improvement, inspire critical reflection, and promote professional learning as a lifelong process. The third goal is that participants who complete the program will exhibit management skills to facilitate the effective operation of the school. Specific objectives are that participants become skilled in the following areas: communicating with students, staff, parents, and community stakeholders; addressing student discipline issues; developing effective operational plans and schedules; and understanding school division policies and regulations. The fourth goal is that the participants who complete the program will exhibit instructional leadership skills that lead to student academic progress and continuous school improvement. Specific objectives for the fourth goal are that program participants become skilled in instructional coaching, communicating curricular goals and instructional objectives. in instructional coaching, communicating curricular goals and instructional objectives, assisting teachers to develop effective learning plans and monitor students' progress, and implementing a systematic program of instructional supervision. After completing the evaluation readiness process, a comprehensive evaluation of the Lead Aspiring Administrators Program is recommended. Because there are no plans for a new cohort in 2018-19 due to the division's current staffing needs, the evaluation plan focuses on the most recent cohort of aspiring administrators. The plan calls for the evaluation to capture not only participants' reflections of their experience in the program, but also their professional activity during the year or two following their exit from the program. The evaluation focus areas are noted on the slide. They address the program's operational components, participants' characteristics, progress made toward meeting goals and objectives, stakeholder perceptions, and the additional cost. This concludes the presentation regarding the evaluation readiness process and the plan for evaluating the Lead Aspiring Administrators Program. At this time, Dr. Palet France, Coordinator in the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation, and I are available to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question, real quick. In your qualifications, did you, could you go back to the qualifications where it said what they had? I believe it said on there that they had to have taught three years. Is that, they have to have taught three years before they can apply to get into the program?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you. Mrs. Rye?
Yes, I apologize if I overlooked this, but how, how long is this program and length of time?
The program is a two-year program, and so, we started the first cohort in 2016-17. And so, those people finished in 1718. Some of those in the beginning, the first cohort, were promoted. And so, because of that promotion, there was a closed process where additional candidates were brought in. And so, those folks were given the, a very crash course in it, and so, we're extending the learning that they have for the 1819 school. So, there will not be an additional cohort this year, because we want to make sure that we have, that they get.
And I'll add that that's all documented in detail in the report.
So, if I may just continue for a moment, so, is, this is, at this point, a one-time thing? So, an assistant principal, well, this is somebody who is not an assistant principal yet. So, somebody who attends, and now two years pass, and we're still not promoted. Can they come back?
Well, we have had an excellent success rate. 55% of the candidates who, of the participants in the aspiring administrators program have been supported and have been promoted. So, they're either assistant principals, or they're administrative assistants. So, we do make sure that people recognize that participation in the program does not guarantee that you will receive, because there's still qualifications that you have to meet. But also, we want everyone to understand that if you don't get into aspiring administrators, that will not keep you from being an administrator in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. There's a pipeline that's being developed, but you don't have to be an aspiring administrator to be an administrator.
That's good to know. And this is just a comment, that this, in my view, is one of the advantages of a larger school system, that we, you know, our size is such that we can justify having a program like this. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Next on information is the program evaluation schedule for 2018-2019. Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Jenneke.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Dr. Heidi Jenneke, Director in the Office of Research and Evaluation. This evening, I will share the proposed schedule of program evaluations that will be conducted during 2018-2019, based on School Board Policy 6-26. Before presenting the evaluation schedule for the upcoming year, I'll provide a brief review of the evaluation reports that will be provided in upcoming months, based on last year's schedule. The reports that will be provided to the school board this year, based on the 2017-2018 program evaluation schedule, are shown on the slide. Most of the reports will be provided to the school board throughout the fall. The evaluation planning reports for SRT and LEED were just presented, and the report for the English as a Second Language program will be shared in September. The final evaluation of an Achievable Dream Academy at Sea-Tac Elementary School will be completed this fall, and the second-year evaluations of the school counseling program and the EBA will be completed. Finally, the school board will receive an evaluation update for Green Run Collegiate and the final Academy and Advanced Academic Programs longitudinal update. At this time, the proposed 2018-2019 program evaluation schedule will be presented, including the process for selecting programs. Programs scheduled for review include the evaluations that have been previously scheduled, as well as additions to the schedule based on School Board Policy 6-26. The proposed evaluation schedule for the upcoming 2018-2019 school year will require school board approval. As a brief review, school board policy outlines the evaluation requirements for new and existing programs. New programs that operate with local resources will be evaluated for a minimum of two years, and then during the final year of implementation. In addition, the program evaluation committee reviews existing programs for possible addition to the evaluation schedule as space allows. The committee includes representatives from various departments and schools, the Virginia Beach Education Association, and the community. This year, we emailed the committee members and asked them to identify the program that they would recommend for inclusion on the schedule. Next, the proposed evaluation schedule is presented to the superintendent senior staff to obtain feedback regarding the final recommendation. And finally, the Office of Research and Evaluation staff determine the type of evaluation that will be conducted for each program on the schedule. This slide presents the proposed program evaluation schedule for 2018-2019. The four programs listed represent previously planned evaluations. As was presented earlier tonight, student response teams is recommended for an implementation evaluation, and the aspiring administrators program is recommended for a comprehensive evaluation. The school counseling programs' final evaluation of the three-year plan will be conducted, and will focus on the program's personal and social development component. Finally, the evaluation of the English as a Second Language program is anticipated to begin. Two additions to the evaluation schedule include Schoology and Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, or PBIS. Schoology, the division's learning management system, was added to the program evaluation schedule because it will be implemented at all schools across the division in 2018-2019, following the field tests that occurred last year at the Digital Learning Anchor Schools. Because it is considered a new initiative, the evaluation will focus on implementation across the division. PBIS was selected by the program evaluation committee for inclusion on the evaluation schedule because it was perceived as having the potential to have a large and positive impact on VBCPS reaching its goals, and information about the program's effectiveness within the division was not already available. It was determined that PBIS would be scheduled for an evaluation readiness report. The evaluation readiness process will allow the evaluators, in collaboration with the program managers and staff, to refine division-wide goals and objectives for the program, to determine the design of the evaluation and specific data that will be used to measure goal attainment and to develop the evaluation plan. And this concludes the presentation of the program evaluation schedule for the upcoming school year. I'm available for any questions at this time.
Do we have any questions? Thank you, Dr. Jenneke.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have standing committee reports. Does anyone have anything to report concerning one of our standing committees?
On the Sister Cities Committee, they elected a new treasurer, and they elected me. So, I'm now the treasurer of Sister Cities. So, because I don't say no when I go along with it, I'm like, okay. But anyway, today, I signed the papers, so I am now the official treasurer.
Okay, that concludes the formal part of our meeting.